Fox, oh there we go. Green?
Yes.
Leathers?
Here.
Dubay?
Here.
Lees?
Here.
Young?
I'm here too.
Thank you.
Alright, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. First, we have a tax abatement request and Mark Stotts is gonna explain that.
Alright, Chair Getz, Superintendent Krenz, members of board, we actually have three requests tonight that the board is gonna be asked to act on individually. I'll try and make this fairly shameless and quick. First request again is to evade 100% of school districts' portion of real estate taxes on the building improvements for a period of five years. The subject property is located at 1306 20th Street Northeast in Austin and the request is Bigelow and Lennon Construction. You've approved a peer there of properties prior to this. The total estimated property value is 249,900. With that, I'd recommend approval.
So moved. Can I just make, can I make a comment before we act on this? I believe, I believe it was last Thursday, there was an editor, a letter to the editor in the Austin Daily Herald and it was concerning the tax abatement. The headline was "Who Picks Up The Other Half?" And the writers of the editorial are very thoughtful and reflective and they bring up a number of points. In a nutshell, the editorial is talking about, a lot of applications have been approved in excess of $4,000. And it's his or her contention that property owners not building homes are likely to pick up a share of the tax for five years. He also shows that the average housing unit in Maure County in 2016 was $114,000 and they maintain that the $4,000 abatements are quite big. His counter, or their counter proposal was, instead of tax abatements, maybe it would be nice if people who own current homes, single-family dwellings, maybe could have some tax incentives so that they could improve their homes and then move on and then young people could purchase those homes and build up equity and contribute to the community. And then his last paragraph was, and he's a constituent of mine, they're constituent of mine, so I believe their last point is a good one and that's, "With elections around the corner, we are hoping that some public discussion can take place among candidates regarding the subject of abatements. It would also be helpful for the voters to have a running dollar total of abatements approved by each unit, the city, the county, and the school board." And I just bring that up because I thought it was a well-written editorial, letter to the editor, and I thought that the individual was quite measured and reasonable and was just asking for some answers to his question, his or her questions.
Thank you, Don. I don't recall that I've gotten a call. Mark, have you gotten a call from them?
No, I haven't.
We could explain all of that to them and that's what I, if they're your constituents, I would encourage you to have them call one of us. And as a school district, we can explain current law which allows us to do this, current law that doesn't allow us to take current tax homes and abate anything from them and those sort of things and we can, will absolutely explain those things to them. We'd also explain, and Angie's on the, on the mayor's housing needs committee, can explain that by allowing new homes to be built, it frees up smaller, more affordable homes for families to move into. Because you can't build a home in today's world under $275,000. And that really is the, is the basis of all this. And Craig did an excellent job explaining that to, to the committee that Angie's on and to us and to the school board. Those are, those are really important things to understand. But again, please encourage them to call Mark or myself and we'd be more than happy to sit down with folks. We've never to, excuse me, turn anyone away to answer any of those types of questions.
The other, the other thing that I'd like to point out and just remind people of is the fact that they're being taxed on the value of the property so it isn't like we're losing tax dollars or losing tax base. You know, the abatement is only on the housing improvements put on that property and so I didn't quite follow their point about other taxpayers picking up the bill just because of that.
Yeah, there's, there's no extra costs that go anywhere that someone else would have to pick up.
Right. And as David mentioned, if they could give us a call or Craig Clark at the city or John Erickson at the HRA, they'd be able to explain it also.
Well, another reason I bring this up is if this person has the courage to write something in the paper, there are probably other people in the community, in the school district that are having similar questions, right?
And we've tried to inform people about that. Yep.
Thanks.
Okay, can I get a second?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And another tax abatement request from Bigelow and Lennon also.
Okay, this is a second request by them this evening and they are based out of Byron. I think we've talked about that previously. The property is, the project address is 1402 20th Street Northeast in Austin and again, the total estimated abatement amount is 249,900 of property value. Two different properties, very similar.
Can I get a motion to approve a tax abatement request for Bigelow and Lennon Construction?
So moved.
So I go.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next.
This request comes from Donald and Sandra Livingston. Again, it's a request to abate 100% of the school districts' portion of real estate taxes for a period of five years. The project address is 18,540th Avenue in Austin and the project estimated property value of improvements is $250,000.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the tax abatement request for Donald and Sandra Livingston?
So moved.
Sorry.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Next, we have any delegations? I don't think we do. Superintendents report.
Chair Getz, members of school board, Austin community, just a, three quick updates. We've had an excellent start to the school year and everything was going fine until Friday and all of a sudden, I guess the kids woke up and it was discovered they were at school and we better start acting like it. Actually, they were just mischievous, little things that were going on. So over and all, it's been a great start. Everybody's been excited to be back. Enrollment numbers look, look about the same as they were last year so we're in pretty good shape there. We're not, not in dire straits as many of our, other districts around us are. I'd like to remind the board that on Wednesday evening at 5:30 is the Isaac Walton League's cookout annual, they have monthly cookouts but this, this cookout specifically goes for, the, the cost of the meal goes back to the school district for their Wet Bugs Project, which I sponsored, so I encourage you to head out. It's at the, at Todd Park at the Isaac Walton League Cabin and it's great food if you've never been there before. I think this one's pork feed, right? Normally they have steak but it's still great. And then finally, not this, not this Thursday but a week from Thursday is the MSBA advocacy tour. And what, what it is is, members of the MSBA cabinet come around to areas of the state to meet with local school board members and administrators just to talk about issues that should be addressed at the next upcoming legislative session. I know that we've talked about members possibly attending. If you're planning to attend, please let Sharon know and we can arrange some, maybe some transportation together. I will not be able to make it. Normally, I do make those but Thursday night is the, next Thursday is the distinguished alumni banquet, so I'll be attending that. Not that I'm a distinguished alumni but be there to honor our distinguished alumni. So that's my report.
And next we have our school board reports. Are there any reports from our school board?
I'd just like to say I was in a couple of buildings on the first day of school and it was really fun to see all the kids so excited to be there in spite of the rain and the teachers and staff were all ready to go and they, it was just a great energy. So I wanted to say a thank you to the staff for all that they were doing in order to be prepared for that first day.
Anyone else? Nope. Alright, next we have our student school board reports and our student representatives and I want to welcome Aleah Andrade officially. So Aleah is our 11th grade student school board representative. So and Mackenzie Pelletier is now a senior and is back joining us again. So normally we have the 11th grade go first and then the 12th grade but I think since it's Aleah's first time out with us, we'll have Mackenzie go first and then Aleah, you can follow after her, so.
Alright, so we have had a really successful start to the school year. There was lots of auditions and signups going on this week for clubs so Austineers did hold their audition this past week and members found out if they made it this Friday. Superfans also signed up so we have a great group this year. I think it's gonna be really interesting, lead some good cheers, hopefully stay within school spirit. We did have NHS signups this past week as well. Applications were due Friday. And then homecoming court nominations took place today and they're finalized tomorrow. We'll find out who's on the court this Friday at our assembly. The week before school started, we had Link Crew going on and that was our orientation with freshmen, as many of you know. We had a really good turnout. There was actually quite a few freshmen there, definitely more than last year, I would say. It was a big class and hopefully they'll be good this year. While this wasn't a school sanctioned event, this past Saturday, we did have a benefit for Megan Erie from four to eight. She is a member of my class and she was in a car accident this past spring and it went really well, there was a good turnout, so hopefully they raised a lot of money for her.
Alright. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Aleah and so for sports, football had their first home game against Red Wing and they won and also senior night took place before the game where the seniors walked out. And we also have Battle of Connects and Homecoming next week. And Monday, we have where you could dress up, so Monday you can match with someone. Tuesday is SPAM Day, Wednesday Dress Up, Thursday Class Color, and Friday Red and White. During that week, we also have a food drive where each grade like competes against each other and whoever gets the most food brought in gets like a prize.
Alright, nice job. Thank you. Alright, next we have our principal reports. Our elementary report is being brought to you by Principal Jill Rowley.
Alright, good after, or good evening, Chairperson Getz, Board members, Superintendent Krenz. I have the elementary reports for September. Starting with Banfield, we experienced a smooth opening day despite the rain for our 442 students. We did have some tears but staff did a great job of reassuring parents that everything would be just fine. The day was preceded by an excellent staff development session on August 23rd where teachers explored the use of Seesaw for instruction and continued the work on essential learning outcomes and common formative assessments. Our garden got a makeover and we have a brand-new playground for our students and neighborhood. From Nevlin, September has already been an exciting month at Nevlin Elementary School and I'm excited to share many of our September night highlights. Our first day of school was off with a blast with 97.6% attendance rate. In spite of the rainy start, Nevlin's halls were filled with smiles and excitement. This week starts our collaboration time for students and teachers. Once a week, teachers meet to review their students' progress toward meeting our essential learning outcomes and share instructional practices with each other. At the same time, students meet with our social, our school social worker, success coach, and guest speakers to learn more about themselves and to learn more about each other. This week also marks the beginning of our fall benchmarking window where students have the opportunity to demonstrate their readiness in math and reading so that our teachers and interventionists will be able to work with small groups to best meet their learning needs. Later in the month, Nevlin students and Sumner students will have the opportunity to learn about, more about cultures around the world through a partnership with Global Minnesota. Global Minnesota volunteers will be visiting our classroom on Monday, September 24th to host a Classroom Connection Culture Day where students will learn more about the volunteers' language, country, and traditions. A few other dates to share with you, Thursday, September 13th, our PTC will meet at 5:45 PM. On Tuesday, September 18th, Life Touch will be back for picture retakes and on Tuesday, September 18th, our third graders will be joining all other third graders for a day on the farm. At Nevlin, we work to make every day and night great. From Southgate, Southgate is off to a fantastic start and classrooms are full of happy gators. The Southgate staff has spent time this year building individual learning profiles for their students. Our goal this year is to authentically engage students in rigorous instruction. In order to accomplish this goal, we truly need to understand our kiddos, their experiences, and how they learn best. These profiles are ever-evolving and will allow us an opportunity to, opportunity to individualize learning opportunities for students. We also have some fantastic events coming up at Southgate in September. The 25th Annual Walkathon will take place on September 25th. The theme, "Gators Are Growing Into Leaders", is a great stage for the community leaders joining us during this day and our PTC works so hard to make this a fantastic experience for our kids. We will also have our First Family Night on September 27th from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. Students will have the opportunity to play various games and activities on our school grounds with leaders from AHS teams. From Sumner, the official media release for our Healthier Schools Silver Award will be on September 24th. Sumner's third and fourth grade suite has begun implementing personalized learning and the staff has been working with Lana Peterson from the University of Minnesota to create pathways that meet our students' needs. Our fall parent-teacher conferences start today. In our grade-level collaboration meetings, we are reviewing the common formative assessments and have begun using them with students. Our first Parents United for Kids family event will be on September 25th with the theme of "Let's Move." And finally, at Woodson, we had a great engagement at our back-to-school conferences this year. We included a scavenger hunt for parents and students to explore their new school and at each destination on the hunt, they were greeted with a staff member and a short informational video clip of the area in action via the Seesaw application. In addition, this week was paired with staff development to support our strategic direction and the team-building focused on the mantra "Together We Can." The first day of school kept us on our toes with unpredictable weather but we were able to continue tradition with the wave goodbye at the critter lines. We were fortunate to have support from district office in the cafeteria and our kindergartners were able to enter our building with a high-five from Superintendent Krenz. All of our critters made it home safely with the help of our dedicated paraprofessionals who volunteer to ride the bus to ensure, ensure our kiddos are safe even after they leave our school. It was a great beginning to the best year yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Andrea Malo with our secondary report.
Chairman Getz, members of the board, Superintendent Krenz, this is the secondary, secondary report which begins with IJ Holton and news from Mr. Shara. He reports, "We had a great back-to-school week with staff development focusing on PBIS and AVID. Both are frameworks, one for building climate, the other for student success and post-secondary preparation. This year, there has been a large focus on the implementation of PBIS, or as we are calling it, Hawk Pride. Staff have been active in creating behavior expectations for all locations of the building. Staff are acknowledging students' positive behaviors. The committee meets on a monthly basis and has 17 members. Not only are staff acknowledging student behaviors and the positives but they are also acknowledging other staff's behavior and when they go above and beyond expectations. This renewed investment in PBIS will have a positive effect on the culture of the building for both students and staff. The entire staff decided to work to improve participation for breakfast in the, in the morning. Last year, we averaged around 300 students a day eating breakfast. This year, with the cooperation of our kitchen staff and custodial staff, we now have breakfast in the FTLAs. Our goal is to have at least the same percentage of our students eating breakfast as our free and reduced population, which is about 60%. As of last week, we are seeing about 500 students eating breakfast with our new programming. This is an increase of 300 students or about 59% of our total population. We saw our numbers increase daily and we believe we should be able to exceed our goal once the breakfast process becomes routine. The entire staff at Holton should be commended for coming together to get this done. It was truly a team effort. The open house was also a great success, thanks to our secretarial staff for organizing the event and our success coach, Rosa Narvez, for lining up the interpreters. In the classroom, teachers are working on building routines and processes. Our fifth graders seem to be adjusting well. We greet them in the morning at the bus door and the main entrance. Although this isn't perfect, it does quickly give us a barometer."
Mrs. Kabine at LS reports that they had an excellent start to the school year. As students and families were welcomed the first day of school by staff members and Bill Spitzer from APAC and his sound system. The feedback was positive from stakeholders as a positive way to kick off the school year. We have had, we had summer renovations, thanks to buildings and grounds and an incredible custodial crew. Our site has seen walls repainted, carpet taken out and replaced by tile, a front office remodel, and working on creating a family space at the front entrance of our building. This week, students are taking the Scantron assessment, it'll be this week and next, to identify learning targets that will allow them to gain success during the course of the school year. And at Austin High School, I had to narrow this down because I had lots of positive things to share. The school year started, started AHS and we were excited to have students and staff back in the building. As staff started back, professional development was strongly focused on instruction. We started with learning about our students and ways that we can build relationships with them and help them feel welcome and cared for at AHS. We did an iron teacher theme. Staff learned about important programs in our building and focused on ways that we meet the needs of all learners, including those with special needs in our EL students. There have been many updates to our building over the summer, including new paint and packer gym and new lockers on the first floor. The media center has added new collaborative workspaces and made changes to the layout of the library to better meet the needs of our students. We kick off homecoming week this Friday with the announcement of the homecoming court. It's always an exciting time at Austin High School. And a homecoming week is September 16th through the 22nd. I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate our wind ensemble under the direction of Kristoff Dundas, who has been invited to perform at the Minnesota Music Educators Conference this February. There were only three bands invited to perform and Austin is the only band from greater Minnesota. We are also very excited at Austin High School about the opportunity afforded to our students through the Hormel Foundation Austin Assurance Scholarship. We are looking forward to October 1 as a day that we can share more information with our students and community and we would really like to thank the Hormel Foundation for their investment in our students. That is our secondary report.
Thank you. Next, we have our department updates and committee reports. First, we have John Alberts with Educational Services.
Chair Getz, members of the board, Superintendent Krenz. I've had no advisory committee meetings up to this point because it's the start of the new academic year but I thought I'd update you on a few things that have happened over the course of the summer. In particular, our secondary students will be noticing some new curriculum that was purchased for career and technical education classes during the 17, 18 academic year as well as during the summertime. What's kind of fun about these purchases are, it looks a little different from the core content classes and so just to give you a sense, some of the materials that have been purchased for use include things like a laser engraver, a CNC routing table, stationary oscillating spindle sander, try to say that five times fast, tools for automotive classes, some professional cutlery sets, as well as a washer and dryer so that they can wash their whites apparently that they're using in their cooking classes. We purchased some welders, some 3D printers, some project lead-the-way materials, and a floral cooler that I think found its way into the building. We were not sure whether or not it was gonna fit in the elevator but a floral cooler and some equipment for a floral design class that'll be starting semester two or next year, next year. So getting a jumpstart on that, so kind of, kind of a more fun project. In addition to that, we are, for the 18, 19 academic year, new math materials were purchased for grades five through 12 but I won't do the rundown because that's not quite as fun. We just have new books for grades five through eight and then for algebra, geometry, statistics, advanced placement stats, and pre-calculus. I also want to recognize the fact that, you know, while summer may appear to be a downtime, we have a lot of professional development that our teachers are involved in and I just want to recognize the fact that we do have a lot of teachers that, that take time during their summers to really, you know, recharge but also to also think about, you know, how do they improve their practice? And they're going all over to do this and so I just wanted to give you a sense of some of the places. We've had teachers this summer attend the International Society for Technology and Education Conference. We had a number of teachers attend the AVID Summer Institute and you've heard from the AVID students and parents before during a board study session. As mentioned before, the PBIS, or Positive Behavior Intervention Supports Conference. We also had some teachers attend the Personalized Learning Summit and then of course, our own Gifted and Talented Symposium. And so summer is definitely a time for recharging for our teachers but I think people would be surprised as to the number of teachers we have that actually go out and do professional development in the summer times on their own time too. So just wanted to recognize that. And then finally, as was mentioned earlier, we do have our third graders having their opportunity on Tuesday, September 18th to go visit a few farms and so I just wanted to publicly, publicly recognize the Chamber for their work in, in helping this endeavor as well as the farms. There's, one of the stops will be the Corey and Kay Hansen Farm. Another stop will be the Sales Dairy Farm. I think they, they're, have been doing this for quite a while for us and so our, our students get to go out there and see some milk and ice cream and all sorts of dairy products, it sounds like. And then finally, the Darrell Ingvulson Farm. So I just wanted to thank those farms for opening up their doors and allowing our students to get a little glimpse in as to what farm life looks like. I know that for a lot of our students, that is a new experience and so hopefully the rain will stay away and we can have that date on Tuesday, September 18th. And that is my report. Any questions?
One of the, just a note on that, it's just amazing to, to watch the kids that get out and watch the kids at many of these places and see their, the amazement to figure out, find, not to figure out but to find out where their food comes from and, and all the things that go on to, to make that happen. I remember one year, several years ago now, one of the, and they're all volunteers, the farmers, the Chamber members who helped support. So here's this, this poor individual talking about calves and cows and, and all, how they mature to become milkers and about the necessary that, they, it has to become a cow to be able to give milk and about males and females. Not wanting to go into a lot of detail, one third-grade boy raises his hand and says, "Well, how do you tell the difference between a male cow and a female cow?" And the poor facilitator turned about 100 shades of red and just kind of turned around and walks away. You know, you just, you gotta anticipate what third graders are gonna ask. Krenz, how do you tell? Mr. Lees, we'll talk about it after the meeting.
Superintendent Krenz, Chair Getz, and school board members, I'm pleased to tell you all about community education. This summer, 60 students participated in summer school which included ESL, GED, and PARI classes for our adult basic education. McPhail offered piano lessons to some of our students free of charge in July and August and that was a rousing success. This collaboration was very positive for all involved. 170 students have registered for adult basic ed classes this fall and they started today. For ECFE, we have 182 preschools. For ECFE, we have a hundred and eighty-two preschool students participating in half-day and full-day programming at Sumner and CLC. The staff did home visits to all of these students prior to the start of school. And we are so thankful for our collaboration with Smart and Palmer Transportation in getting so many of our students to us in a safe and timely manner. Finally, we have about three hundred and fifty students enrolled in school year programming for Kids Corner at six different sites. And our community education brochure was delivered to Austin Postal customers this week with a wide array of opportunities for learning for learners of all ages. We haven't had our advisory councils start yet, so I look forward to reporting on that next month.
Thank you. Next, Sheri Willratt with Special Services.
Chairperson Getz, Superintendent Krenz, members of the board, my required committees also have not convened for the year yet, but I do have a couple of items I'd like to update you on. One is our required monitoring processes through MDE. You may require, or you may recall from last year that I had mentioned it was kind of the year of monitoring for us. We had three different monitorings for Austin Public Schools and two more for the co-op. I'm pleased to announce for Austin Public Schools, in our due process paperwork review, for the first time ever, we had a notice of no findings. And so our staff was very pleased to hear this at our back-to-school gathering. We had a little celebration. They've worked very hard to get those processes and procedures down pat, so I was very proud of them for that. We also had our onsite monitoring, where a monitor came and spent a whole week in our district and interviewed lots of staff, toured all of our facilities, took a look at all of our processes and procedures. We also had very favorable results from that. The one follow-up we need to do is revolving around our procedures for evaluating students who are English-language learners. We have appropriate procedures in place, but some of the staff that were interviewed weren't aware of them. So we need to do some staff development to make sure all staff is aware of the procedures we follow, and then also that there's not a cutoff for referrals and making sure that we're still proceeding with that through the end of the school year. We also had our fiscal audit for Austin Public Schools Special Services that also was very positive. We have a couple of very minor findings and tweaks that we need to do in our procedures, but overall, a very good monitoring. For the co-op, similarly, there were just a couple of citations in the file reviews. Those will be very easy to correct and get submitted. Their onsite monitoring was fantastic. They were very impressed with the facility that we've developed over there at Oakland Education Center. So glad to have those monitorings all under our belt. The one other area I wanted to update you on is staffing. I know there's been a lot of concerns because everyone's aware that it can be very difficult to fill our positions in special education. I'm very pleased to announce that despite a few last-minute resignations, we did start the year, we've got all of our professional positions filled. We had a couple of very late resignations of teaching staff and a mental health practitioner, but I'm very pleased with the quality of the applicants we were able to put into those positions. So I'm very excited about the team we've assembled to meet the needs of our students. We also had a few last-minute paraprofessional resignations. We're still working to fill a couple of those, but overall, we're in really good shape with our staffing as well. So very pleased with where we're at for this point in the year. That is my report. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Jennifer, where do you have the hundred and seventy adults whereabouts are they, are they out at Queens, too?
Yep, we have about half of our programming out at Riverland during the day and half at the CLC during the day, and then the, we have about fifty going at night at Riverland. So that's where our folks are spending time. We have two sessions a day.
And that makes up the one seventy that we're talking about.
Yep, so we have two sessions a day at Riverland, two sessions a day at the CLC, and then one night session.
How is Riverland working out?
We think it's a great collaboration to have folks out there where they can transition right after they finish their GED or their EL programming to take classes. So we think it's an exciting opportunity to partner.
Okay, thank you.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the donations.
Hey, we have numerous donations for your consideration tonight. The first one is parents, staff, and community members. Nineteen thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-three cents to Banfield for the playground. Cedar Valley Services, four boxes of school supplies for all schools. Freeborn Mauer Cooperative Services, two boxes of school supplies for all schools. Hormel Foods Corporate Charitable Trust Employee Match, three hundred and twenty-five dollars to the Banfield Playground. Kiwanis Early Risers, five hundred dollars to the CLC for Kids Closet. Kiwanis Early Risers, five hundred dollars to Southgate for the Kids Closet. First United Methodist Church, one thousand three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents to all schools to help families with student fees. Arkema Inc. Foundation, five hundred dollars to IJ Holton for science curriculum. St. Olaf Lutheran Church, fourteen boxes of school supplies to all schools. And Hormel Plant Workers, one thousand two hundred and ninety dollars and seventeen cents to all schools for school supplies. With that, I would recommend approval of these donations.
When someone donates to help with student fees, are they for fees that have already been incurred, or are they for future? So if, for instance, you know, a family comes in to mass registration and is like, I can't afford the thirty dollars for school supplies, is it applied towards that then, or is it?
Andrea, are you familiar with that at all? Is it being run? Okay, it is, okay.
Okay.
Who's administering that? Okay.
Got it, okay. I was just out of curiosity, so. All right, can I get a motion to approve the donations?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
We have our first reading of the revised policy number five-one-six about student medication. Is there, I think Carolyn is prepared to read the purpose of that.
Yes. The purpose of this policy is to set forth provisions that must be followed when administering non-emergency prescription medication to students at school.
Okay, and just a reminder of the school board study session scheduled for September twenty-fourth at four o'clock, and we will be meeting at Banfield Elementary this time around. So can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and meeting adjourned.
Make sure you bring your play clothes.